All right. Today is Tuesday, March 23rd. This is our combined special meeting and work session. I'm now calling to order. Who do we have? Have we gotten for the pledge? Let's do, Councilmember Shimoney, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? And then Councilmember Solis with the mission statement, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Please rise, everybody. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wichita Sands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Oh, before we start the meeting today, I would like to take a moment of silence for the victims of the census acts of violence that occurred in Boulder, Colorado, and also in Atlanta, Georgia, last week. Please join me now as we show respect for the individuals lost. Thank you, Council. City Clerk or Deputy City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor DZ.
Present.
Vice Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Councilmember Aslan.
I'm here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Solis.
Present.
Councilmember Shimoney.
Present.
Councilmember Sweet.
Present.
All right, we're down to agenda item number four. This is our consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2021-11 and Ordinance Number 2021-05. Resolution, the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Coquenino County, Arizona, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk and entitled case number PZ2100019 zoning code text amendment as 2021 affordable housing modified development standards and an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Coquenino County, Arizona, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 10 Flagstaff Zoning Code to modify the affordable housing incentive and parking standards. Staff recommended action is to adopt Resolution Number 2021-11. City staff, take it away. Mr. Seimer, I think you're on silent here.
All right, thank you. Mayor members of the council, Dan Seimer, zoning code manager for the city, planning development services, I'd like to make you aware that we do not have a formal presentation today, although I do want to make you aware of the fact that based on last week's recommendation for incorporation, we did include the following modification to the resolution that's on your screen, which is to notify by first-class mail all affordable housing advocacy agencies on file with the City of Flagstaff Housing Section of the purpose and of the request, time, date, and place of the city council meeting. And that is in accordance with the recommended and adopted motion of last week. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Seimer. Council, do we have any comments or questions at this time? Or I'd be happy to entertain a motion. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we adopt Resolution 2021-11.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor?
I second that.
I have a motion from Councilmember McCarthy, followed, seconded by Vice Mayor Daggett. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I would also like to stir our city attorney. I will need to do a separate one for the ordinance number 2021-05, correct?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
All right, just making sure here. Do I have a motion to read ordinance number 2021-05 by title only for the final time?
So moved, McCarthy.
Do I have a, I'll second that motion. First motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 10 Flagstaff Zoning Code, adopting by reference that certain document entitled case number PZ-21-00019 zoning code text amendment dash 2021 affordable housing modified development standards, providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
I move to adopt ordinance 2021-05.
I second that. I have a motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Down to agenda item number five, consideration and approval for Flagstaff Shelter Services Support Letter. Staff recommended action is to approve the letter of support. I would like to motion to approve the letter of support as written. Do I have a second? Councilmember Daggett has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm fully in support of the letter. I'm wondering if we can also send one to our delegation, edited to make sense that it's going to our delegation rather than FEMA.
I'd be with that. Maybe if city staff could speak, I understand city manager may not be here for a little bit of time, but is that something that's doable for, from the city staff?
Hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Councilmembers Jessica Drum, Public Affairs Director. Yes, if that is the will of council, we can absolutely edit this letter and send it to our congressional delegation as well.
Okay, thank you.
Would that, city attorney, would that need to be a separate motion or a separate agenda than what we have here to be done at a later date? Or can we do this all in one? In terms of using?
It can be done all at one right now.
Okay, well, then I would like to motion to both approve the letter of support as well as to send it modified to our delegation. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, who jumped on that one? I didn't see.
Mine it may be.
Okay, Councilmember Shimoney. I have a motion by myself, seconded by Councilmember Shimoney. Although, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Agenda item six, we'll be right back here, but I'm journeying our special meeting, and we'll go right into our work session. And I would like to, so I'm calling our work session now to order. And I just want to notify the public that the city council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public for legal advice and discussion with the city's attorney for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Ms. Fobar, do you have, oh, I am saying we do not have any public participation at this time. So we are then down straight to agenda item number three, which is Sustainability Commission Updates. Excellent. Take it away, Mr. Lenz.
All right. So good afternoon, Mayor and council. My name is Dylan Lenzen, and I am a sustainability specialist for the city's sustainability section. And for the last eight months, I've had the pleasure of serving as the staff liaison to the Sustainability Commission. And although I'm here tonight to help answer any questions that you have about the commission and how it intervenes with our work as the sustainability section, I'm actually gonna, to let the Chair of the Sustainability Commission lead you through this presentation this afternoon. And with that, it's my pleasure to introduce and hand this presentation over to the Commission Chair, David McCain. So Dave, whenever you're ready, feel free to take it away.
All right, thanks very much, Dylan. And good afternoon, Mayor and council. Really appreciate this opportunity to give you an update on the work of the commission. Next slide. Next slide, Dylan, can you hear me? There we go. So background. In terms of our history and authority, the commission was formed in 2007, following the development of the Sustainability Program. And the purpose is to serve in both an advisory and working capacity to recommend and coordinate activities in concert with the Sustainability Section. That includes promoting compliance with certain city sustainability policy and more globally, just to promote sustainable practices in all spheres of life and educate the public concerning such practices. Next slide. This is a list of our current commissioners. There's myself, our Vice Chair, Kevin White, Eli Chamberlain, who's our commissioner that served the longest, and then four relatively new members who've been with us under a year and a half. That's Ariel Coffey, John Daly, Kristin Kaufman, and Kristin Conkle. And those are our two double Ks, which provides the challenge for the chair at our meetings. And also wanted to introduce and thank our city council liaison, Austin Aslan. Councilmember Aslan, we really appreciated the work you've done with us, especially regarding your work on the climate emergency declaration. And you've already heard from our staff liaison, Dylan, and our administrative assistant is Marissa Molloy. And I wanted to express my appreciation to both Dylan and Marissa. As Dylan said, he came on in the fall, and Marissa came on even more recently. And there's been really seamless transition from our previous liaison, Jenny Neiman. So really appreciate the work that Dylan and Marissa are doing. Next slide. So this is a summary of our work program, and I'll be focusing on each of these bullet points in a minute. First, the Neighborhood Sustainability Grant Program. Second, advancing climate action. Third, feedback and direction on city planning, policy programming, and budget. Fourth, collaboration with other city commissions. And lastly, listening tours of city operations. Next slide. So first, the Neighborhood Sustainability Grant Program. With this program, provides grants up to $2,000, and they're divided into these five program areas. Climate Action, Sustainable Food Systems, Community Resilience, Waste Prevention and Recycling, and Water Conservation. And we've, over the last two years, distributed nearly $42,000, 26 projects out of 43 applicants. And we've also received part of this money from the water conservation program, specifically for water conservation programs. And I wanted to say a little bit more about the grant process. It invites residents to submit applications, which the commission reviews. Representative for each application then attends at our meeting, and the commission makes a decision on who we will award the grants to. And then we ask them to come back at the end of the term to give a report on their work. And this has been a really fun way for the commission to have a real tangible effect on the community. Much of our work, like much of yours, I think, is a little bit abstract, not directly impacting folks. But this is a neat, neat way for us to actually see the city working on sustainability out in the community. That's been really, really exciting. And we've seen a lot of creative approaches to creating more sustainability in the community. And now I'd like to handle, I'd like to highlight a handful of the projects that we funded over the last few years. Next slide. First is Compost Crowd. They requested a trailer to expand their services collecting compost in the community. And they were able to reach over 150 residential customers by the end of the 2019 Flagstaff market season. And they tripled the volume of food straps being collected in Flagstaff. So we're very excited to be able, to be able to support their efforts. And we also initiated a partnership, last slide, not quite done, Dylan. We also initiated a partnership between Compost Crowd and the Sustainability Section with our pumpkin drop-off, which was a huge success in 2019. I don't know what happened to it in 2020. I think it was a little bit less due to, due to the conditions we're dealing with. But hopefully, this year's will be a big one as well. Next slide. This program was a precious plastic recycling project, and it was an aspect of Tyler Leonard's thesis from the Sustainable Communities Program at NAU. And it allowed, allowed him to get an additional machine that enabled him to produce solid color recycled objects, which is an important part of the work he was doing with his thesis. And Tyler went on to want, win the Flagstaff's Innovate Waste Challenge, which funded his new business with partner Fran Alvarado, Praxis Waste Solutions. So we're excited to be just a small part of that business development here. And for those who are on council, Tyler presented prototype clipboards made from recycled sleds in 2018. Next slide. This is Terra Birds, the Flagstaff City Hall Landscape Conversion Pilot Project. And this was another exciting project. Really, it was a pilot to begin to consider how to convert the unnatural grass that has surrounded City Hall with more natural foliage that's really appropriate to our region and to see how that would look and to determine the best way to keep moving forward to possibly replant more parts of that lawn. And in terms of how much water was saved, it was only about 2,000 square feet of lawn. And that saved nearly 125,000 gallons of water per year. So this was just a taste of future work that hopefully will allow the city both to save a heck of a lot of water and also to have a little more natural environs around our city hall. Next slide. So these are our grant cycle winners for our most recent cycle. And the first is the Arboretum at Flagstaff, a high-desert backyard produce garden. It was funded for just under $2,000. And this was also exciting. They intend to create a demonstration garden that shows a host of ways to produce food in our challenging climate in limited space. And the Arboretum is very skilled at getting people in and educating them on a variety of topics. So this will be a great way to educate the community and also to provide produce for the community and also seed sharing. So we're excited about that project. Next slide. Our next recipient is To Oakley Anderson Moore, a Dry Greens Garden Project, funded again for just under $2,000. And the purpose was to popularize drought-tolerant native and non-native plants that can be eaten as greens. And a key part of this project was that it really focuses on a multicultural approach, distribute seed packets and educational materials in English, Spanish, and Dene. Next slide. All right, our next recipient was Darian Banali. His project was about growing indigenous health and resilience, funded for over $1,000. And this again was focused on growing in small spaces. In particular, this enabled community members to grow nutrition garden plants from balconies, while also learning the importance of healthy eating. And the vision here was to provide gardening kits to participating families and to provide training over Zoom to allow them to create their own balcony gardens. And another recipient was the Southside Community Association, the Murdoch Center Community Garden. This was funded for $341, and this was an upgrade to support their community garden with rainwater collection and irrigation. Next slide. And the last winner that we'll highlight is Threaded Together, their sustainable sewing, sewing classes, and they were funded for $2,000. And again, this is a really neat way to educate people on the importance, the value, and the process of sewing and really focused on repurposing materials, teaching responsibility for young people, and also the power of resilience through hand quilting and mending. So we're also excited about that grant. Next slide. We had a working group that, over the last few months, did a complete overhaul of our application and review process for our sustainability grants. And over my five years on the commission, we've made some revisions. But this is really, I'd say, a substantial upgrade for, to the application that will support this program for years to come, we're hoping. And just as an example of cross-fertilization between commissions, our Commissioner Conkle on the working group suggested that we use the application for the beautification and art action grants from the Beautification and Public Art Commission as a model for our revisions. And that was very, very helpful to have that model. And the result that we have, I think, is, is really a big upgrade over what we had before. So starting with our next grant cycle, we have an updated application requirements and description. Evaluation criteria have been modified to really better reflect what we're looking for as a commission. The review process has been altered, and we've also decided to provide a few direct ways to support applicants. We really want this to be as accessible as possible. So we will have a couple of staff-led workshops that will walk people through the process to really reduce any level of intimidation that grants might provide. And I think in some, these trends, these changes will allow greater clarity and effectiveness for us as reviewers and greater ease and support for those who apply. So I think it will be very helpful for us. And one thing it will also do, one of the decisions we made was to change how we review the applications. In the past, everyone has reviewed every single application, and this past term, we had over 30 applications. So that was a little more time than the commission wanted to spend. And it also took three of our meetings, which is one-fourth of our meetings, which is considerably more than we wanted to spend on this project. So we have changed that. So each application will be reviewed by three commissioners, which will streamline the process quite a bit for the commission. Next slide. Another big aspect of our work has been advancing the Climate Neutrality Plan, working with the Sustainability Section on that. We've been receiving updates monthly since the adoption of the Emergency Declaration in summer 2020. And we've been able to vet the plan and engagement efforts to let people know about it. And we've had comments and questions that have been considered by staff throughout the process. Our feedback, I think, has been really well received. There's been assistance that we've provided for engagement efforts, getting information out about surveys, open houses, and other feedback opportunities. And I was able to participate in the steering committee meetings, which was really an education for me. And I appreciated the way the Sustainability Section really was able to get input from a good cross-section of the community. And I was especially pleased to have solid business, community representation in that process. And that led to, I think, some productive discussions about some of the, some of the challenges, I think, that are part of implementing this plan. Next slide. So in addition to those other work programs, we've also been able to provide feedback and guidance on a range of other policy and programming efforts from the city, including the Materials Recovery Facility, Animal Keeping Code, the Building Code. And on that note, I was active with Friends of Flagstaff's Future several years ago, when we advocated strongly for a previous council to update the building code. They did not, and we fell a ways behind. So I was very pleased that both the Sustainability Commission was able to support those proposed changes and that the council was able to bring us up to date on that code. So thank you, council. We also have given feedback on the Active Transportation Management Plan, the Water Conservation Strategic Plan, and the Southside Community Plan. And also, we have received various, we had listening tours of various city operations and community initiatives. Priority-based budgeting is one, and I really, really enjoyed learning more about that. And I also participated in the peer review process. So I'm glad that we have a process that, that really forces the city to be accountable to its priorities. I really think that's an important step in making the council's work more effective. So that's really exciting. And looking forward to hearing about the regional plan and also the Lived Black Experience Strategic Plan in the next few weeks. Next slide. Another project that we initiated was a collaboration with the Beautification and Public Art Commission. And this is a BPAC-funded art project to be featured on mountain line, mountain line buses under the theme of climate change and hope, really, really wanting to integrate that theme into this art, since it is such an important focus of the commission and the council and the city at large. And we're working currently on exactly the content of the grant application. But I wanted to really raise my appreciation to Sandra Labarsky, who's the Vice Chair of BPAC, and she reached out to me with this idea. And I really welcomed it with opened arms. And it's been fun to collaborate with another commission and city program on something that, that people will see and hopefully will have an impact on the community. Next slide. Regarding our future work program, we have several things that will be coming up in the pretty near future. One is our mission and vision, vision exercise. We're actually meeting, our meeting is the fourth Thursday of the month. So this Thursday, we're going to do a deep dive into creating a mission and vision for the commission to really provide a little more specific direction on where we're headed beyond the ordinance. And I think this is especially important now because, as I said, we have four commissioners that are relatively new to the commission. And we really want to, as a group, take a look at where we're headed and how we want to focus our limited energy. And we're very open, if any council members have ideas how, how we can best serve the community and the council, I'm definitely very open to hearing those. And then our second effort is to review the FY21-22 budget items related to climate action. Myself and our Vice Chair are going to be doing some work on that to provide additional feedback for staff and council. And then, as I said, these revisions to our Neighborhood Sustainability Grant Review Process, we are anticipating higher volume of applications as funding increases. So we're preparing for that, being proactive about that. And there's a budget request, the sections made that would double the impact of the program. So we're really hopeful that that request will be filled. Excited about that. Next slide. So I'd like to talk about some challenges and concerns. And one is defining our role more clearly. And I think the Neighborhood Sustainability Grant Program is a program that is very clear and provides a very, a very neat way for us to be involved. But beyond that, how do we best serve the needs of city council? How do we best serve you all's needs? And then nextly, how do we foster more robust dialogue among commissioners and the public? And an example is the Materials Recovery Facility Planning. That I know there was, I think, the discussion at council that I remember hearing was pretty robust. And I think it's important that our council both has those kind of robust, robust discussions and also involve the community in a larger way, since it's clear that these meetings are not the, our typical meetings over Zoom are not the best way to get that input. Then nextly, how do we keep the commission ordinance relevant? Things have changed in the 14 years since it was adopted. So we really want to keep things fresh as we move forward. And then managing the increase in funding for the Neighborhood Sustainability Grant. I think we've done a couple of things that will help with this, but it's still another focus of our commission. Next slide. So one idea for consideration is that we are thinking about through our commission working groups, organizing community forums on specific topics to go outside of Zoom, hopefully, once we're able to get out in the community physically or via Zoom and gather greater impact on programming policies and initiatives and to take that that feedback back into our commission meetings and be able to distill that and share that with the city council. All right, next slide. I want to thank you very much for your attention and I'm very open to any comments or questions if anybody has one.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. It was a great presentation. And it's really, really nice to see all the work you all have been doing and all the great projects you've been funding. And I'm also very happy about the possibility and, well, not possibility, the, a lot more projects that are, that are to come. So thank you and the rest of Sustainability Commission for all the work that you are doing.
Yeah, you're very welcome, Mayor DC.
You know, and council, do we have any comments or questions for Commissioner McCain, Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chair McCain. Great to have you with us. And thank you for your service to our community and to, to the commission. Couple of comments and couple of questions for you and Dylan and other folks. And hi Dylan, good to see you. So I'd love to see us build upon our partnership with Terror Birds on our parcel. I think that the, the start was a good start. And, and like you said, Chair, you know, there's opportunity for growth and, and you know, this is almost like a taste of what's possible. And so I'm curious, what are the next steps? Are there any plans of next steps? Or what does that look like? Do either of you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, Dylan, could you take?
Yeah, that's a great question, Councilmember Shimoney. And I think that would actually be a better question for our water conservation staff. I know they were very involved with that. And I don't know if Nicole's on the line, if she has any updates, but I personally don't. But I'd be happy to, you know, look up that information and get back to you on that.
I see Nicole put her comments in the chat. Nicole, you want to jump in?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director. And, and thank you so much for the time and, and the question, Councilmember Shimoney. Yes, this has definitely been a partnership, not only with water conservation, but also with parks. And there was a lot of dialogue about what phase two and potentially even phase three could look like. In the immediate term, all the work that is currently done with being done by ADOT has been a priority in consideration of what next steps are. I'd be happy to reinvigorate the conversation among city staff and and get a better understanding of how long the ADOT project will continue to impact the South Lawn and what next steps may be for phase two and phase three.
Great, thank you. Yeah, definitely a high interest of mine. Okay. And then in talking about the Neighborhood Sustainability Grants, I wonder, Dylan and Chair McCain, if we can overlay the lens of the climate goals and priorities and really looking at the emissions that are being generated locally. And I think Nicole knows where I'm going with this. Looking at our pie chart of emissions locally in the years 2016 and 2018, 40, 42% of the emissions are coming from transportation. And we talk about the big shifts and the desire to see the big shifts occur, but I'd like to know, Chair McCain, do you think that there is a way we can utilize these grant opportunities to address transportation and that big shift that we're looking to see? Whether that's bicycle usage or bus, alternative transportation options? Is there, is there an appetite for that? And do you think that there is community desire for that?
Thank you, Commissioners Shimoney. I think there is appetite for that. And I think there is a possibility for us to highlight that. And I think we have the five focus areas. I don't know, Dylan, I don't know if you can bring those back up or if you know them offhand. We have these five focus areas and certainly it allows for a broad range of projects to come our way. And I think what we could do certainly in how we market the program and, you know, how we do the outreach, I think, yeah, there they are. So we have climate action, sustainability, sustainable food systems, resilience and waste prevention and recycling and water conservation. So I think that one way to get at what you're talking about, Commissioner Shimoney, would be perhaps in how we're marketing something like climate actioning, how we're, what groups we're going to and how exactly we're reaching out to different groups to give them, give them ideas. So that's one, one idea. And then a second is that we have, as part of our revisions, we do have a workshop, a grant workshop for potential applicants that staff will lead. So I see that as another touch point where potentially we could connect with different applicants and possibly support them in moving in that direction. I think it's challenging because I think we want to balance, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to limit what people do and prescribe what they do. But I think we can do some encouragement, both through our marketing and through that, that workshop that we do. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you. It was good to see you, Darian. And I'm just wondering, you know, maybe a bullet point on transportation or the big shift would be appropriate. So I kind of better bring attention to it because I love waste management, all these things that we're working on. But I think when we're looking at our goals by 2030, the, the big elephant in the room is transportation. And, and you know, looking at this pie chart, waste of 10% of emissions while transportation is 40%. So I just think that we need to start really putting some serious focus on that big shift if we really want to be successful. That's my thought. That's just, that's just my opinion though. But yeah, anything we can do to bring more focus, you know, not, not taking away from all the efforts we're doing, but just to really hit this one. Nicole, did you have something to add?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Chairman McCain did mention that the Sustainability Section did submit a budgetary request to increase the Neighborhood Sustainability Grants. And if that does move forward, the request was specifically designed to fund projects in two new areas. And those are school zone transportation improvements and neighborhood resiliency projects. So along the lines of exactly where you're going in terms of achieving our carbon neutrality goals by 2030 and assisting the community to help us get there.
Thank you, Nicole. And Mayor, last point. I just wanted to give a, take a moment just to acknowledge that the Active Transportation Master Plan is well underway. Hopefully Martin and Rick and staff are having that on, you know, priority schedule, which I believe is going to a public review process starting in mid-May. Hopefully that is going to be more or less on that same timeline. And that can go also to the public. And maybe the Sustainability Commission can help in getting the word out on that. And, and Chair McCain, lastly, on the comments of collaboration between commissions, I wonder if we do start focusing more on transportation, if there's room for collaboration with commissions such as the Bicycle Advisor Commission and the Transportation Commissions and the Pedestrian Advisor Commission, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Daggett.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Shimoney, for always inserting transportation into the discussion. I heartily agree that every discussion of sustainability needs to also be a discussion of transportation. And I know staff and our volunteers on the commissions agree with that as well. And really, I just want to thank sustainability staff and the volunteers on the commission for this wonderful work and for all the collaboration. And I think sustainability staff deserves an extra pat on the back for keeping this group of volunteers so engaged that they're helping to move all of this work forward. So just well done all. And it's exciting to see everything that sustainability is doing. Thanks.
Mary muted.
Thank you. Second time today. Hopefully it won't be a three. Well, I'm not seeing any further comments and questions in the chat. So I thank you again, Chair McCain and all of our Sustainability Commission and our sustainability team here for City of Flag for moving the needle and making things happen. So much, much obliged. With that, does bring us down to our agenda item number four, which is our Open Spaces Commission update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is Rebecca Sayers, Parks Recreation and Open Space Director. I'm going to bring up the presentation and Robert Wallace will get us kicked off. Robert?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Robert Wallace, the city's open space specialist and the liaison to the Open Spaces Commission. I'm here this evening with my colleague Sylvia Struce, the Educational and Outreach Volunteer in Service to America, who supports our program, and the Open Spaces Commissioners as well. Tonight, we have Chair Mike Wilson with us, Vice Chair Andy Bessler, Commissioner Jim Burton, Commissioner Joseph Thomas, Commissioner Mark Lotheth, Commissioner Eric Nolan and Commissioner Jack Welsh. It's really nice to be here this evening. I'll share the first slide on the commission's authority and then I'll turn it over to the commissioners. The Open Spaces Commission was established by the City of Flagstaff in 2003 to advise the city council on acquisition, preservation and management of the Flagstaff Open Space. And the commission is composed of seven members, six community members and one member that is also a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. You see the authority of the commission as city code outlines. In addition to the overarching direction to advise city council on acquisition, preservation and management of open space, duties also include reviewing and advising the city council on the development and implementation of the Open Space Management Plan for a long-term direction, planning and decision-making, advising and assisting the city council on ways to educate and involve the community on the value protection and stewardship of open space lands, advising and assisting the city council on ways to work collaboratively, collaboratively with other governmental entities and organizations to advance and ensure the implementation of the Open Space Management Plan and the Flagstaff Regional Plan, advising and assisting the city council regarding regional open space issues, and also obtaining public input and participation in various programs such as environmental education, operation and the management of open space. I can personally say that the commission works really hard to represent the community on open space topic, topics and puts a lot of thought and time into serving city council. So thank you for letting me share the authority with you. And now the commission's chair, Mike Wilson, and Vice Chair Andy Bessler will be providing you with a brief update regarding the commission's recent work and priority focus areas. So thank you very much. I'll turn it over to Commissioner, Mr. Wilson.
All right. Thank you, Robert, Mayor DC and City Council. It's, it's a pleasure to be here and to be able to make this presentation on behalf of the Open Space Commission. During this presentation, we'll be providing you with some background on the commission's mission, provide updates and share its goals. And I will share a brief update on what the commission's been focusing on in 2020. And then Vice Chair Bessler will be speaking to you about the commission's priorities and areas of focus for the new fiscal year. Also, he will provide the commission's insight about the possibilities to work together to move the open space program in a direction that provides the community with additional benefits. Next slide, please. This slide shows the current open space properties that we're managing. These include Observatory Mesa, McMillan Mesa, Picture Canyon, Schultz Creek. So these are the ones that we are actively managing at the moment. Next slide, please. The Open Space Commission's mission is to advocate and support the development of the Flagstaff Open Space System while preserving current opens, Flagstaff Open Space and providing equitable recreational opportunities and educational experiences. Based on that mission, we strive to fulfill our five overarching goals, which are number one, to protect, restore and maintain open space lands. Two, to grow, link and provide access to those lands. Three, to foster discovery, learning and stewardship in the community. Number four, to cultivate partnerships. And five, to achieve sustainable, long-term financial viability for the program. In support of goal number one, over the past year, the Open Space Commission collaborated on a number of projects. First, the final steps to completing the zoning code amendment for the McMillan Mesa natural area are now underway and will make the property zoning consistent with the regional plan amendment and Prop 413. The commission supported efforts to engage the community and obtain feedback through two neighborhood meetings as well as a 60-day public comment period. Also recently, the Open Space Commission has been partnering with Arizona Public Service, APS, to determine a solution for adjusting their easement on McMillan Mesa to ensure that these are consistent with Prop 413 and the conservation of McMillan Mesa. With attention to this factor, the Open Space Commission delivered a recommendation to city council that would provide restoration of acreage surrounding the APS parcel while assisting APS's need for improved access. And actually, this recommendation comes before city council on April 6th. So you'll be seeing that very soon. Also, the commission also worked to provide updates and recommendations to the open space program on its open space management plan. And this plan was forwarded to and approved by the city council on July 7th of 2020. Next slide, please. These efforts have supported the community in a, in a variety of ways. Carrying out the rezone and upholding proposition 413 has a direct effect on the neighborhoods surrounding McMillan Mesa. The Mesa provides healthy opportunities to get outside for neighborhood, for the neighborhood. The Mesa provides healthy opportunities to get outside for the neighborhood and businesses alike. The preservation of this area provides neighboring residents with a direct connection to the natural environment and helps to achieve environmental justice. It has been demonstrated that people living in walkable neighborhoods get about 35 to 45 more minutes of physical activity per week, and this provides a positive public health benefit as well as enhancing a person's overall mental well-being. And some of those neighborhoods are shown on the right side of this slide. Hopefully you can see a few of those. But so those are directly impacted by the McMillan Mesa natural area. Also, the Open Space Commission worked with APS to recommend modifications to their easement to meet their needs for access as related to maintenance and emergencies for the Eldon Substation. An agreement was worked out to ensure that the adjustments were consistent with Prop 413 and added to the conservation of McMillan Mesa. The third bullet point there, the commission review and input on the open space program's management plan helped ensure proper management techniques were outlined for the best management practices in order to carry out the community's interests. Next slide. In support of goal number two, the Open Space Commission has also been working towards the implementation of an integrated and interconnected open space system to provide all residents with access to nature. The Open Space Commission partnered with the Parks and Recreation Commission to form the PROS committee, and we worked together to draft a bond measure making recommendations outlining community values and objects and objectives that would support parks, recreation, and open space. And during the PROS process, a vision emerged of an interconnected open space system. And to support a connected open space system, the Open Space Commission has also been partnering with the open space program to draft a trail plan for Observatory Mesa that would improve the community access and recreational opportunities in that area. And these efforts by the commission have supported the community the following ways. The commission's work in the PROS committee identified the need for sustainable funding for proper management of open space and the implementation of an interconnected system to provide equal access across our community. The map on the right side of this slide is the vision for an integrated and interconnected system in Flagstaff. You can notice that there are the existing open space areas, you know, such as Observatory Mesa, McMillan Mesa, Buffalo's Park, which is not technically an open space, but is a park. Picture Canyon and Fort Tuthill is also included bottom left-hand side of this slide. The three parcels that you see on the lower right are not currently part of the open space system in the south. They're not currently properties that are currently in our system, but they have been identified as a potential solution for the need for open space in the southeastern portion of the city. And the map also shows the associated proposed interconnections to all of these properties. So this is the vision right there. This expansion is needed as use of existing open space is growing. For example, trail counters located at Picture Canyon documented an astounding 30,000 visitors in 2020. Efforts are ongoing to ensure that the open space program's long-range plans will identify the community's future infrastructure needs and associated costs. Work on the Observatory Mesa Trail Plan being an example of this. The commission's efforts to help secure funding and community access will support economic prosperity, excuse me, enhance recreation, outdoor opportunities for walking and biking, as well as to accommodate increased use. And a couple of interesting statistics related to open space and trails are that in the past year, Arizonans used trails in the state for non-motorized recreation an estimated 83 million times. And an estimated 59.2% of Arizona's adult population, or over 3 million people, have engaged in non-motorized trail use in the past year. And that number was quite amazing to me. Next slide, please. To support goal number three, the Open Space Commission has partnered with the Open Space Program to support community involvement and education. To support community involvement and education, the Open Space Commission assisted with the City's Make a Difference Day to conduct a community cleanup on McMillan Mesa. And the commission also provides input on the open space program's education and outreach, which strives to provide underprivileged youth with opportunities to learn and grow. An example of this is the Adigus Youth STEM Academy Program, which provides students the opportunity to learn about science, technology, engineering, and math in connection to culture, community, and land stewardship. Next slide, please. And these, you know, these community involvement efforts by the commission have supported the community by ensuring accessibility for all residents, promoting a healthy environment, and providing educational opportunities that boost self-esteem and shape an interest in education that can improve life, leading to social and economic benefits. Students that were engaged in open space educational events in fiscal year 2018 and 19 totaled 1,429. And in fiscal year 2020, 2019 and 2020 totaled about 500. At that point, I'm finished with my portion of the presentation about what we've been up to. And I want to thank you all for your attention. And now I want to introduce Vice Chair Andy Bessler, who's going to share with you what the commission would like to accomplish in 2021, going forward, fiscal year 2022. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Chairman Wilson. Hopefully folks can hear me okay. Just want to say thank you to Mayor DZ, Vice Mayor Daggett, and Flagstaff Councilmembers for your attention today. This slide really talks about our ongoing focus for fiscal year 2022. The Open Space Commission has identified four focused priorities for the new fiscal year that will reflect your goals, Flagstaff's Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, and the priority-based budgeting goals that you have. These priorities include providing improved conservation values and maintenance to support the public use of Flagstaff's amazing open spaces, to complete a city code review and recommendations for improvement for strengthening protections for open space, to establish an interconnected open space system that Mr. Wilson showed you earlier, and to achieve a sustainable funding source to support the overall open space program. So in the new fiscal year, we're going to focus our efforts on drafting recommendations for the code revision, completing the Observatory Mesa Trail Plan in partnership with stakeholders and the Flagstaff community, and exploring opportunities to encourage sustainable funding for the city's open space program to maintain and complete an integrated open space system for the community. Next slide, please. These focus areas present opportunities for us to partner. During the 60-day public comment period for the McMillan Mesa rezoning amendment application, many citizens showed support for the open space funding. While this sample size was small, a more thorough survey may be a good strategy to gauge support for different funding mechanisms for the open space program. If you all are interested in learning more about the community support for this program, we're prepared to collaborate and engage the public to determine a viable and sustainable funding solution that would support the city council's goals. Next slide, please. As you can see, the open space program's focus areas touch on every priority category. I'm sure that you're all familiar with this slide on the priority-based budgeting priorities and objectives. So we won't go through all of these, but the objectives that are highlighted tick all the boxes that the open space program can meet for your priorities and objectives. So we believe that the program aligns very nicely with these objectives and impact all of the city's priorities. Next slide, please. Furthermore, we believe that working together to secure open space funding would benefit Flagstaff and the zoning communities. Studies demonstrate that, on average, open space lands require less expenditures to maintain than they generate in revenue. Maintaining Flagstaff's character with open space dispersed throughout the city will maintain our community character and keep us from becoming just another unidentifiable city. The economic value of trails in Arizona derived from non-motorized trail use as it relates to consumer surplus funding by in-state residents based on a midpoint estimate is $8.3 billion a year, with model estimates ranging from $6.2 billion to $10.6 billion. And this comes from that same study that Mike discussed earlier by the Department of Agriculture, Agriculture and Resources Economics at the University of Arizona. Research shows that open space has a positive impact on low-income urban communities by helping to fill gaps in health inequities. And I can tell you from my direct experience that during this pandemic, regular walks and open space lands kept me sane, and this value for other residents can't be measured. But I'm sure you'll agree with me that open space helped us all get through the pandemic. Open space helps preserve Flagstaff's unique natural resources and increases public's accessibility to parks and recreational facilities. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, we're committed to representing our community's values around open space. In the near future, the Open Space Commission will be completing the Observatory Mesa Trail Plan, advancing Flagstaff's open space system, and looking forward to working with the city council to implement a solution that secures funding outside the general fund that enhances the sustainability of the open space program. And that's really it. I do just want to close by, again, thanking Robert and all the staff that supports the open space program. They do a great job getting all this work done across the city. So thanks, Robert, and Chairman Wilson. Thank you for your leadership. At this point, we're happy to take any questions, so thanks for your time.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and thank you, Chair Wilson, for the presentation and all the work that you're doing. Council, do we have any comments or questions for our Open Spaces Commission? Vice Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mayor. And thank you to the Open Spaces Commission and to staff. I agree, as you were giving the presentation, I was thinking this is what got me through the pandemic was trees, trails, being able to be out. It's one of the defining features of our community. And we're so lucky that people way before us had the forethought to set aside some lands as open space. So I hope that we can continue to be part of the forward-thinking bunch that people who come after us can look back on and say that we were pretty smart about all of this. And when I joined the Open Spaces Commission as the council liaison, I was pretty surprised to learn that there's no funding source. And Vice Commissioner, Vice Commissioner Bessler, if I'm saying this wrong, please correct me, but there's no funding source for ongoing maintenance of our open space lands. And that's something that I hope that we can do something about in the very near future. But great job. Thank you all for all of your work, and thank you staff for, you know, helping to protect lands that define our community.
You, Vice Mayor. Councilmember McCarthy has a question.
Hi, Andy and everybody. Andy and I go way back. My question is, are we taking into account wildlife corridors or wildlife transportation paths? Or are we only thinking about where the humans might want to go? Does that question make sense?
I might be able to address that question.
Yeah, go ahead, Robert.
Thank you. So while we're developing the Observatory Mesa Trail Plan, there has been a pretty substantial review of cultural resources, wildlife corridors, and other sensitive natural resources in the development. And so we are trying to consider those avenues and plan accordingly so they don't impact those zones.
Yeah, and you know, I don't know if we ever think about it, but we might want to consider where we allow development or that we might ask developers to leave an open corridor where wildlife needs to travel. So maybe that's out of the scope of your purview, but I don't know who else's purview it would be. Anyway, just a thought. Keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Salas.
I have three questions. First, actually, it has something to do with wildlife, but in connection with creating or watchable wildlife experience, especially as we embark on developing a trail plan for Observatory Mesa. So there's an ongoing statewide and also a strong presence of the Arizona watchable wildlife experience. I believe there's some in Fort Tuthill and other areas in town. So that's my first question. Then my second question is, is the Open Space Commission involved in the budget development process for the open space program? I know the open space program is underfunded. I think it's a little over $130,000 a year. So I'm just wondering if the Open Space Commission is involved with staff developing the budget for the program. And then my third question is a cost estimate on implementing the long-term vision for integrated open space system as shown in the map. So what's the tag price on that if fully implemented and constructed? Then I have two comments, just going back to your slide on how you align, the commission aligns the commission goals with the city's goals along with priority-based budgeting. I do want to include another square under the environmental stewardship is to increase the private sector's participation in environmental stewardship efforts because I know for a fact that a lot of our trail maintenance and trail building rely on donation and volunteers from the private sector. Yeah. And lastly, I also just want to thank each member of the commission. Thank you for your time and service to our community as well as staff. I do want to mention to our Open Space Commission that this year, council has ensured that we have included environmental funding and partnerships, especially opportunities to expand open space, parks, natural areas, trails, and dark skies initiative across northern Arizona as priorities in our state and federal legislative priorities. So, thank you.
Thank you. This is Robert Wallace. I can help address some of these questions if you'd like. Thank you so much for your comments and your questions as well. The open space program is involved in the Arizona Watchable Wildlife Experience. And we do sit and as part of that chair, in fact, Picture Canyon is a designated watchable wildlife zone as well as some of our other city open space. And so we just recently helped assist with some of those ongoing activities in partnership with Willa Ben and some of the other members of the Arizona Watchable Wildlife. And if you have any specific questions, I am actually joined by my colleague Sylvia Strus, and she can help address further questions about the Arizona Watchable Wildlife. As far as your second question about concerning the budget, the Open Spaces Commission does provide our program with recommendations for where we should allocate our operating budget. We did submit two line item requests to the budget team this year. One, in support of providing funds for maintenance of our open space. And a second one to help implement the Observatory Mesa Trail Plan to complete NEPA analysis, cultural surveys, and community outreach. And those two requests have been approved tentatively by the budget team and I believe will be moved forward to city council. So our operating budget is around $34,000 and that includes doing education, work on our open space signage and the like. And I believe the last question was in regards to the open space system that the commission has been working on in partnership with Parks and Rec Commission. And they did identify the need for providing an open space area in the southeastern quadrant of Flagstaff since we're working towards a goal to provide access, about a 10 to 15 minute access time. And an estimate for one of those state parcels comes in around $7.5 million. And I think actually some of the council members might remember that presentation that the prose committee provided them at one point last year.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet has a comment.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the staff and commissioners for the presentation tonight. And you have an important role as our city continues to grow. And I just, I appreciate that you are continuing to find the balance between growth and keeping our open space. And I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to say hi and thank you to the Chair and the Vice Chair and the State Staff Liaison and all the council or the commission members. I have no questions or comments. I just wanted to express gratitude. Thank you.
Well, I will say transportation's part of this, for sure. A lot of bikes on those trails too, Adam.
I add to that, vehicles traveled miles all the time. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Shimoney, and thank you Vice Chair Bessler, Chair Wilson, and Mr. Wallace and the whole team. Yeah, thank you for the presentation.
Appreciate the time.
Yes, thank you.
And that does bring us down to agenda item number five, which is our Heritage Preservation Commission Council update.
Thank you, Mayor DC. My name is Sarah Decter. I'm the Comprehensive and Neighborhood Planning Manager for the city. And I'm the staff liaison to the Heritage Preservation Commission. I'm going to share the PowerPoint here and just introduce to you the Chair of the Commission, David Hayward, who will be presenting tonight. I'm here to assist him and so is Mark Rubus, who is our Heritage Preservation Officer. And with that, David, are you here?
I'm here.
Great.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you for having us tonight here to learn a little bit about what the Heritage Preservation Commission does and our plan for the future. I know you're slogging through a couple of these, so I appreciate your attention. Sarah, if you want to go ahead and get started with the first slide. So our commission is slightly different from some of the others in that we have qualifications required for some of the spots. That is that two members must be professionals in the field of heritage preservation. And we are lucky to have currently one member on faculty at NAU and another who is an archaeologist who works in the state. We also have members who are historic property owners, private citizens who own eligible historic property, both, in this case, one residential, one commercial in the city. And then we have three at-large members, one of whom is me and another we currently have a vacant spot which we're looking to fill. And obviously, as always, you know, a shout out for assistance from any members of council or anyone else who happens to be listening. If you know someone who would be a good fit for the commission, please do let us know. We can go to the next slide. The other interesting and key point about the Heritage Preservation Commission is one of the few commissions of the city's many commissions that has the ability to make legally binding decisions on issues that come before it, similar to planning and zoning or the Board of Adjustment and some of the other commissions. So those include recommendations for the application of landmark overlays, creation of historic design review districts, as well as some other sort of more informal issues arriving, you know, around educating the public, assisting owners of historic property in town with rehabilitating their properties or achieving, you know, obtaining funds for the same. And then also working with the city to identify and help preserve specific landmarks in historic districts and using the funding that's available to us to help with that. The other couple of items that we are responsible for is reviewing and making decisions on development applications that come before the commission in regards to their impact on historic structures or if they are not in historic structure but are within an historic district, then making sure that they are appropriate to that district per the design guidelines that are in place. And then also, we work to update or recommend those design guidelines as necessary. And then, of course, lastly, as per the code, it is also whatever you guys ask us to do. Well, we're ready for it as long as it's got something to do with historic preservation. So the specific code that was enacted for heritage preservation is part of the zoning code. It's one of the subchapters. It was implemented in recognition of the important part that Flagstaff's history and its historic structures and its cultural resources contribute to making, as I want to steal the line from the previous presenter who said, you know, making it so that Flagstaff isn't just like any other city. And I think that's especially important here in Arizona, that we are one of the few larger communities that really has a clear, important, and well-preserved historical downtown and the surrounding communities. Also, there are archaeological resources that date generally back to before the founding of the city. You know, the Flagstaff was a trading route for many Native American tribes in northern Arizona. And there are archaeological resources, obviously some well-known, some less well-known, within the city limits. And then as well, it's important to note that there are, you know, there are cultural resources. And the reason we use that term, right, is that it's not just a matter of the architecture, but also important events or people that might be associated with certain places. And so the code as well is a legal requirement of our certified local government agreement with the state Historic Preservation Office. Like many aspects of local government, our authority to manage these resources and make rules governing their use flows all the way down from the federal level through the state to us. And Arizona has a program in which you can either be a certified local government, as we are, meeting all the requirements of that program. Or you can rely on the state office to do those things for you. Sarah, do you know how long have we been a CLG?
To my knowledge, we've been a CLG since 2006.
2006. So it is a relatively recent thing. And I think something, you know, that reflects kind of the growing importance and recognition of the heritage of our community and how that impacts our city. And Sarah, was there something you wanted to add on the previous slide?
No, I think you covered it well. I think I would add that the certified local government status also allows to consult on Section 106, which is a portion of the National Historic Preservation Act, which means that federal actions within the city limits are sent to our Heritage Preservation Officer for comment. And if we were not a certified local government, then the state would provide comments on our behalf. So that's one of the key distinctions.
And an example of that, right, is recent discussions around ADA access at the Amtrak loading platform at the historic railroad station. And obviously, because of the federal government involvement with Amtrak and governance of the railroads, then that's something that we get to make a decision at a local level as opposed to, like Sarah said, having that go out to the state. So if we take a look at the map on the screen, which is what we call the overlay districts, right? These are overlays because they sit on top of all the other zoning that might exist in these locations. So these might be community commercial underneath, single-family residential, highway commercial, whatever it might be. On top of that sit the overlay districts, which primarily are the downtown overlay zone encompassing a portion of downtown from Humphreys East and north of Route 66 in the railroad. The townsite overlay zone, which includes the area west of that towards Thorpe Park, almost all of that area excluding that where City Hall and the park sits. And then we have another overlay zone, which is called the landmark overlay zone. Those are specific properties or parcels that have been put into the zone, allowing the city to protect them by making them subject to the same rules and oversight of the commission as the other historic districts. So you'll see that up there, we have larger ones on the map, obviously being Picture Canyon, the Museum of Northern Arizona, but you can also see some of the smaller individual properties where owners have elected, the owners of the property have elected to get a landmark overlay designation. And then you'll also see on that that Flagstaff has several national registered districts. So just like an individual property can be put on the National Register of Historic Places because it is particularly significant, you know, I think Monticello or something like that. We also have districts, so whole areas because of the large number of historic properties or events that contribute to the period of significance of those areas, right? So the point at which, in time, which these possibly community really had a transformative effect on both our local history, state history, and in the case of Route 66, national history as well. And you'll notice that some of those do not, they coincide with our local overlay zones, but they are not necessarily exactly the same. One important thing to note is that those national registered districts do allow you access to certain tax credits if you are a contributing structure to the district. So we'll move on to additional duties. I joked to Sarah when we prepared this presentation that our additional duties seem to be most of our duties, not really the ones that were all listed in the code. So while we would like to spend more time, you know, on education and assistance and those other noble efforts, in reality, we do spend a lot of commission time on the review and approval of various reports and presentations and applications, something which I think as council you are probably not unfamiliar with. These things take up a lot of your time. So the big ones for us are certificates of appropriateness for structures. So is what's being proposed in compliance or not with the requirements? We approve cultural resource studies, which are effective prescriptive mitigation of negative impacts on historic properties. So we effectively say if you are going to impact a historic property, which normally means demolishing it, you must have generated an either a Phase 1, 2, or 3 cultural resource study, depending on the significance of the resource. And with Phase 3 studies being limited only to archaeological sites. We also work with the Historic Preservation Officer. work with the Historic Preservation Officer, Mark Revis, on some of his administrative reviews. He provides a lot of advice and guidance and otherwise non-commission-related business to those historic property owners who come to him. And sometimes he will bring some of the more complicated ones in front of us to ask for our guidance on those. And again, with other complex topics where there may be multiple parties involved, or it's a slightly trickier political issue or something. And then finally, one of the more fun things we do is prove applications for the Historic Facades and Signs Grant. You guys saw one of these recently because it was combined with a landmark overlay for the Whispering Winds Motel. That sign is one of the few extant Route sixty-six sort of golden age of motoring signs. It must have been quite a sight back in the day when you were driving around Route sixty-six and signs like that would have just lined the boulevard. We uh, we we reviewed that sign and given that the applicant was intending and willing to fully restore that sign back to its historic character, we were able to give them a matching grant of ten thousand dollars to do that. We review several of those a year. I think the exact number will be actually be on the next slide. And those funds, well, maybe on another slide, those funds come from the BBB tax revenue. So, sort of looping back to the certified local government piece, as Sarah mentioned, there's sort of, there are several benefits to that. We get technical assistance from the State Historic Preservation Office and the National Park Service. The National Park Service, I guess, sort of why it's the Park Service that's responsible at the federal level for heritage preservation is a little unclear. Maybe just because they manage a lot of their own historic properties, but they are the kind of federal entity that is responsible for most of those, sitting underneath the Secretary of the Interior. We also have grant opportunities under that, which is, am I correct, Sarah? I'm saying that that is, that that is federal money that flows through to the flows through to the state and then to us, or is it state funds that then flow to us for those grants?
Chairman Hayward, there's actually two sources. We can directly apply for targeted Park Service grants. For instance, there's an African-American civil rights grant that can be used for capital improvements, and portions of the South Side may be eligible for that. But there are also annual opportunities for pass-through grants. And we have received one in the last year that is for updating the inventory and the historic property records in the South Side in anticipation that we would apply for some of those national grants when we complete that work, so that it can kind of be layered, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so obviously, you know, money that doesn't have to be squeezed out of the taxpayers is always a always a plus, so being able to get some of that. I think, you know, far outweighs the obligations that the program places on us, which generally just, you know, as the list shows, revolve around maintaining a, you know, operable, responsible and involved heritage preservation program in the city at all levels. Sarah, if you want to go to the next slide? So I'm going to turn this one over to Sarah Dekter. Her and Mark Revis, the Heritage Preservation Officer, deserve much more congratulations for the work that has been achieved, you know, over over the last year or so. We might sit there on the commission and, much like council, review and approve these items, but there is a huge amount of legwork that goes into it behind the scenes. And I thank I thank them for that. Sarah, if you'd like to go ahead?
Thank you. So David asked me to review the work program since it is a partnership between the commission and the Heritage Preservation Officer. So, these are the items that over the last fifteen months have actually appeared on a commission agenda for an approval. But there have been almost a hundred administrative approvals behind this. And Mark does an enormous amount of work to get every applicant to have a complete and well-thought-out application, just to have it appear on a commission agenda. And he really provides excellent customer service and introducing people to a new topic in many cases when they haven't really thought about their property and how heritage preservation might impact it. So the current program, in addition to reviewing all of our regular applications, includes the work we just discussed on the South Side National Register District context and inventory update, which was work we're doing with a grant from the state. To complete that work, we've hired two heritage preservation aides who are completing documentation, and now that everyone's fully vaccinated, are getting ready to begin field work in the South Side, with the hope that this work will help one, offset some of the floodplain restrictions on properties that are historic. There are exemptions for that. And then also to help connect these property owners with the financial incentives of the historic tax credits and the grants that are provided by the National Park Service, which can be used for capital improvements in some cases. And the state of Arizona is getting ready, hopefully, if the legislature passes the bill, to possibly refund the state historic tax credit, which can be combined with the federal one and makes that program much more financially robust for property owners. So Flagstaff has not had a historic tax credit project in many years, and we're hoping that increase in funding and Mark's expertise, he's led property owners through that process before, will mean that that small grant franshipo can be leveraged into hundreds of thousands of dollars within the community. So that's part of how we think of this, is not just research for its own sake, but we have plans on how it can be leveraged into broader funding that benefits property owners. We also, under, because of council direction provided in January to myself and the zoning code manager, Dan Seimer, we are going to be taking a look with the commission at the portion of the zoning code that relates to cultural resources and coming up with recommendations on how it might be amended. We're also, as a commission and staff, going to be providing advice to the zoning code manager on the La Plaza Villa character overlay, which is a zoning code overlay that was called out in their neighborhood plan. In the future, we really hope to have a more robust working relationship with the property owners in districts and landmarks. We're hoping especially to be able to provide training and work on new landmark overlays or historic overlays in these areas, especially around downtown. There are also, and I'll show a map in a moment, the several neighborhoods that were built prior to World War Two or in the period right after, that very likely may be eligible for the National Register. And it would benefit both staff and property owners to have inventories of these areas. And so this is something that we may be returning to council in future years for funding assistance. And we'll also be applying for grants to assist with that as well. We've also heard requests from property owners in the townsite overlay and the downtown overlay that the design standards and guidelines for both of those overlay districts are in need of revision. Not because they are wrong or a bad fit for the overlay, but there's just been changes in the zoning code and in building practices and the direction from the National Park Service on best practices that could be better incorporated into both of those standards and guidelines. And so that's work, that's quite a few years' worth of work for both the commission and staff. So these are areas for, that I mentioned earlier. Everywhere in this map in yellow is a subdivision that was created prior to World War Two. And the areas that don't fall within those hatched polygons, the blue, the brown, the black, and the yellow, those are the only areas we have inventoried and gotten through the process of naming them a National Register District. However, we believe there are properties in all of these neighborhoods that need inventory work completed. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Chair Hayward.
Thank you, Sarah. So we've got a couple more slides here to finish us off on some recommendations to, sorry, excuse me, my child outside, recommendations to council and some current concerns. So, two of the important things here, right, with tie-ins to current priorities for both council and the community is that adaptive reuse, right, the reuse of existing buildings is an important part of sustainable growth. And that, also that the preservation tax credits that Sarah had previously mentioned can be bundled with other available credits, either for low-income housing or other other types of programs to promote, again, sustainable, appropriate redevelopment and address the the housing shortage that the city is facing. So those are two two items where we, you know, the heritage preservation really closely ties in with both the climate crisis and the housing crisis. We, Sarah had also previously mentioned, and I've had, you know, one-on-one conversations with many of you regarding long-term improvements to code, which we are looking, you know, as a commission, working with staff and others as necessary to 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 kind of, you know, really work better to fulfill our goal and our responsibilities as laid out, right, in the code to continuously improve these items. You know, if if laws were something that we simply wrote once in stone and never looked at again, we wouldn't need to be here. But, you know, that is not the case. Things change, and these things have to be updated. So some of the long-term improvements we are looking at is to, as appropriate, make more approvals at the administrative level, allowing us to reduce the burden potentially on applicants and better use the commission's time. We we would like to better identify those properties that are in need of protection. As Sarah showed on the previous slide, those World War Two or pre or around World War Two. Sorry, I'll have to excuse me one second. I've got a child barging in.
No problem. I know how that goes plenty, so. I'm sure we have a lot of parents on the call that know the struggle.
I beg, thank you. So, those, you know, not. Okay, I'll be there in a minute, right? Those property owners that are in those pre-World War Two subdivisions currently now, every single one of them would have to come to the HPO and ask them to, you know, determine whether the preservation code impacts them or not. Being able to do contexts and inventories in those areas would allow us to, you know, better identify whether they are, you know, in need of doing that ahead of time. We'd like to see, you know, a- as a commission, an increase and the protections of the most significant properties in our community. You know, as we grow, the impact, the potential impact and the stress on those structures just increases and increases. It might happen slowly, but as we lose more and more of those our heritage and the character of our our community is diminished. And again, the last point and kind of, you know, a- as I mentioned previously, there are diverse cultural resources that exist in our community that are not just architecture. One of the important items that has has come up recently that we were made aware of were the locations that had been Flagstaff that had been identified as as part of the Green Book as, you know, safe locations for African-American travelers through our community. Obviously, that is something that is part of a larger cultural heritage, not something that is, you know, specific to the architecture of the building. So, you know, a couple of concerns, you know, things that we are working on in the commission and with staff. You know, a- as I kind of joked before, we, as a as a commission, you know, do spend a lot of time on approvals and reports, and it leaves, you know, little time for the strategic work and education that I think all of us would much rather be doing, and which would allow us to, you know, leave something behind that's 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 better for the people that come after us. The, there there is a need for a property owner education, tools, publications, meetings, all of those sort of items, just to being able to have resources for staff to provide to property owners, realtors, developers, architects, all those who are interested in or are going to be undertaking work that impacts historic properties. And then lastly, you know, and this is, this is something that ties in to the work on improving the code. The commission could have an earlier role when the demolition or a major impact on a historic property is identified. How exactly that would work is unclear, but currently, the sort of entry point for those items is not until a concept site plan application is is brought in. And the approval is not until until much later, at which point, opportunities for encouraging or working with property owners to save resources, you know, is is a little. is, is a little, um, is, is too little, too late. And Sarah, I believe that was our last slide. Um, you know, contact information for, uh, Sarah Decter is there, um, obviously as well. Um, I can be reached, uh, through Sarah, um, and Mark Revis, who is our Heritage Preservation Officer, um, who you see before you now, um, is available to answer any other questions as well. So are there any, uh, questions or comments from council that we can, uh, take at this point?
Thank you, Chair Hayward and, uh, Ms. Decter. Really appreciate all the information and all the work that you're doing and also the aim to be getting earlier and in the process so we can save some of our buildings and, uh, make sure we're hitting all the, checking all the boxes, whether it's for maintaining our heritage, uh, or for sustainability for all the cross-network of, uh, activities and goals that we have that, uh, this aligns with. So thank you for the, uh, presentation. Council, do you have any comments or questions? Um, yeah, I'm not seeing any, uh, oh, Vice, uh, Councilmember Shimoney and then Vice Mayor Daggett.
Thank you, Mayor. It looks like my camera ran out of battery, so you can't see me. But I just wanted to say thank you to both yourself, Ms. Decter, and Mr. Hayward and the entire commission for your service and work. Um, I don't really have any comments or questions at the moment, but I just wanted to express gratitude. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and, um, thank you, Mr. Hayward and, uh, Ms. Decter. That was a great presentation and I want to commend you all for keeping in mind the very broad and deep, um, history of Flagstaff and, um, looking after cultural resources that, um, aren't only, um, associated with, um, some of our Anglo, um, ancestors, but, but helping to tell the full, rich history of Flagstaff. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Salas.
First, let me send a grateful heart to Chair Hayward and, and the members of the commission as well as to, to Ms. Decter and Mr. Revis for, um, your continued work, amazing work and collaboration with respect to, uh, heritage preservation. Um, this is the perfect timing to have this, this conversation to council. A month from today, council will have a two-day budget retreat. And I am gonna give Ms. Sarah Decter a notch to translate all the, the Heritage Preservation Commission's recommendation and concern and translate into budget requests for council's consideration and approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Um, I'm not seeing anything else in the chat box, so again, thank you for the presentation. Oh, oh, Councilmember McCarthy has a question.
That last, uh, black and white photograph in the presentation, I find myself fascinated with it. What was that big building? Do you know, or? And just artistically, it's a wonderful picture. Check out the, uh, the clouds in the sky there. They're just amazing.
The, yes, thank you, uh, Councilmember McCarthy. This is actually a picture of La Plaza Vieja from about where the Jack in the Box is currently or the Dairy Queen on, on Milton. Um, so that's the armory that you're seeing, the current natural grocers or the building with the cow as it's known to all children of Flagstaff, um, is right there, is that large building on the right side.
Well, I just really appreciated that photograph. I guess that's an example of, we need to preserve some things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Well, um, I think that about wraps up this agenda item. Thank you again, uh, Chair Hayward and Ms. Decter. And that does bring us down to agenda item number six, which is our public participation. Um, seeing from Ms. Fobar, there are no additional public participants. So that brings us down to agenda item number seven, our informational items, two from mayor, council and city manager and future agenda item requests. Um, I will go down the list here. Um, we can start with Vice Mayor Daggett.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a couple of quick things. One, I'm getting my second vaccine on Thursday and I am so excited. And, um, hopefully everyone knows that the age, um, has been lowered down to sixteen. And, um, I want to give a huge shout out to Coquenino County Health and Human Services because they have managed this process so well. And, um, I'm just grateful to be getting the vaccination. And the second thing, after listening to all of these presentations, I'm wondering if the city has ever calculated the number of volunteer hours given to it in any year? Because I'm sure that it would, um, be in the tens of thousands of volunteer hours. So thank you to all the volunteers who give your time and expertise to the city. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Aslan?
Nothing for me.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just might mention that I went to the, uh, State Transportation Board meeting last Friday. And I guess the biggest takeaway for me was that the maintenance, uh, budget for the state is very underfunded, you know, since the gas tax hasn't been raised in, what, three decades or so? So if you wonder why we're having potholes along the freeway, that's why. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just wanna, I just wanna report that in the last week, um, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, um, Mr. Mayor and I met with, uh, Senator Peschakai and, uh, Senator Blackman as part of our state lobbying via Zoom as coordinated by our, 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 uh, state lobbyists. And then, uh, yesterday, um, we also met with, uh, Representative Bardon and, uh, Councilmember Aslan was able to join us as well in that, uh, Zoom lobbying meeting. Yeah, and I'm also excited about getting my second Moderna vaccine shot on Friday. Stay well and amazing, you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Uh, Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, let me get my notes out. I just have a couple of things. So the Mountain Line Board is meeting tomorrow and I am chairing that meeting, so wish me luck. Um, I also am getting my second vaccine on Friday, so woo-hoo, I'm excited about that. Two thumbs up. Thank you, Mayor. Um, and, and I, point of clarification, I'm not sure that locally it is sixteen. Maybe Mayor or someone else can confirm that. I thought locally we were at eighteen. I saw something that state facilities read sixteen, but regardless, um, not a big deal. But yeah, exciting to see us continue forward. I think we are at about thirty-four percent vaccinated in our county, um, and that's a mix of first and second dose individuals. So that's, that's a big deal. Um, the Athena Awards is virtual this year and happening this Friday. And congratulations to all the candidates and finalists. And, um, lastly, just a couple of points to leadership. Um, I, I hope we can speak about COVID on our agenda at an upcoming meeting. I know we kind of put a pause on those conversations because I think of a bit of burnout by council, but I think it's time that we, we have that conversation again. Um, there's been a push to allow our, our sporting events to increase to fifty people to allow for more, um, spectators in the, in, at the events. And also at the Jay Lively Center and expanding that, um, operation to allow for more participants. And I'd like to talk about our senior center, um, and other facilities like that. So, um, if it's possible to talk about that at a future council meeting, I'd be appreciative of that. Um, and lastly, shout out to the ten U or the U-ten hockey team that won state. Um, I think they were the state champs, so very proud moment for our youth hockey team. Um, thank you, Mayor. Nice meeting today, nice and short and sweet and, uh, be well, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney and Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have back-to-school in-person happening this week and I wanted to give a big shout out to the teachers and staff for making it such a nice transition. Uh, you know, I used to be a teacher and I, I'm friends with a lot of teachers and they were nervous, but it looks like it's going well and I appreciate that. And I also wanted to offer a big congratulations to the Athena Award candidates as well. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Well, the one thing I got for you all, since a few touched base on, uh, a few things I was gonna discuss, but, um, I, um, my wife has been able to, um, hit two hundred and thirty thousand KN95 masks, uh, to help with school districts, with, uh, helping those who, uh, are taking care of our vulnerable populations, et cetera, and, uh, I'm, would love to have, uh, council to, if you know of any entity that might utilize these, there is ridiculous number of them and we're wanting to make sure that they go to the most good possible. Um, so I'd love your help with that and finding where we might be able to distribute the KN95s. These are not full medical FDA-approved ones, though they are N95s. So they're more designed for grocery store workers, our teachers, um, and, and et cetera. So, um, I have presented that to, um, in our meeting with President Ness, Navajo Nation, last week. And I just want to make sure that we are utilizing this amazing donation, a large amount that, um, we could really put to some good use. So I'd, I'd love your help in that. We, and we've partnered with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, uh, Carpenters Union, who's going to help, uh, help with distributing this around, uh, northern Arizona and doing some good, but, you know, I'd love some help with, with that, uh, from council or anyone else. So that about wraps it up. And with that, thank you all for the great meeting, very efficient, very straight to the point. I love it. And, uh, with that, agenda item number eight, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, Councilmember, or sorry, City Manager, jeez, did I skip City Manager? How can I do that? He's the most important one of all of us.
Oh, yeah, right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last thing I'd like to do is, is add on to a meeting that was just getting ready to adjourn. I, I don't, I don't want to interrupt the flow. Um, the, the suggestion was made by Councilmember Shimoney, uh, to possibly address, uh, some of the, uh, reentry issues. If I may, Mr. Mayor, I can just get a quick read from council. We had this queued up for council for April thirteenth. We are reading the same, same emails that you are. We can come back, uh, prior to then, there are two meetings before then, uh, to discuss specifically the, the sports field capacity issue, um, and keep the thirteenth open for other reentry discussions. The reason for the thirteenth is it will give us the benefit of some hindsight, looking back on spring break, uh, in the rearview mirror and we'll know, uh, any impact, uh, that is resulting from that. But we're quite willing to, uh, have a discussion between now and then, maybe at the next meeting, uh, related to the, uh, sports field issue and related issues at your pleasure. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, City Manager. Um, I don't want to get too much into a back and forth and, um, make a city attorney have his hackles up, but Councilmember Aslan has a comment. So long as hopefully it's not a back and forth comment.
Yes, I do. Well, um, I thought the City Manager just asked for a read on this.
Yeah, uh, maybe City Attorney can clarify. I just want to make sure we're following, following the procedures on that, so.
And if I may, I'm not looking to have a discussion of it. I'm just asking if you'd like to slate it on the agenda for either of the next two weeks and then we'd have the discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I, for me, I'd, I'd rather keep it where it is. Uh, our kids just got back to school. I'd like to see how that, um, affects the, the landscape. And if we leave this conversation for April thirteenth, I think that gives us enough time to incorporate all that new data.
You, Councilmember, why don't, how about we do this, uh, so we don't have this, uh, back and forth here, but let's, Councilmembers shoot, uh, City Manager Clifton an email, uh, regarding your thoughts on that matter and we will proceed accordingly for the scheduling. Sound good?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, uh, with that being said, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.